Twenty twenty five Pembroke Select Board Meeting, please join us in the Southern Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Welcome. First up on our agenda tonight, we have a tax classification hearing at seven o'clock with our Board of Assessors. This is our FY twenty six tax classification hearing. Will you be presenting, Jeanne?
Yes.
Come on up and join us.
Hi, everybody. For those of you who don't know me, I'm Jeanne Gelati, the current Chief Assessor. So we're here for the Fiscal Year twenty six Tax Classification Hearing. So what is a classification hearing? It's when the Select Board holds a hearing each year to consider the tax rate options available to the municipalities under property tax classification. The Select Board does not decide the amount of taxes to be raised, that's already been done. Nor does it decide the tax rate, also already been done. The classification hearing determines how the tax levy will be distributed among the various property class types. The Board of Assessors will make recommendations to the Select Board whether to establish different rates among the major property classes, a uniform versus a split rate, the small commercial exemption, the residential exemption, and an open space discount. Now remember, the classification hearing only determines the percentage paid of the tax levy for the various property class types. So how are fiscal year twenty six values determined? The assessment date for fiscal year twenty six is January first of twenty five. The assessed residential values are based on an in-depth analysis of the sales market during calendar year twenty four. The assessed commercial and industrial values are based on both income and expense information, comparable sales analysis, and the cost analysis. The Department of Revenue annually reviews and approves the adjusted values that are proposed by all the assessors offices. Our DOR rep approved all of our values last month, so we are good to go. This slide shows the average single-family sale price by calendar year. And as you all know, or maybe you don't, but the sale prices have a huge impact on all the assessment changes throughout the years. As you can see, that two thousand and twenty four, the average single-family sale price was seven hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars. Since two thousand and eighteen, the average single-family sale price has increased over sixty percent. That's why your assessments are going up. So the estimated levy, which is the amount of money that needs to be raised through taxation, is about fifty-three point five million dollars. The total valuation of the town, which is residential, commercial, industrial, and personal property, is about four point five billion dollars. These numbers add up to a uniformed tax rate of eleven dollars and seventy-nine cents per thousand. This is the breakdown of the assessments. Residential values amount to about four billion dollars. Commercial values are about three hundred and seven million. The industrial is about a hundred and twenty million, and then the personal property is a little less than a hundred million dollars. Again, for a total of four point five billion. This shows the breakdown of percentages of the classes. Residential obviously makes up the majority at eighty-eight point four one percent. The commercial is six point seven eight percent. The industrial is two point six three percent, and personal property finishes it up at two point eighteen percent of the total valuation. So the average assessment for fiscal year twenty six is six hundred and thirty-eight thousand four hundred dollars. This is up from last year's average of six hundred and one thousand dollars. Using a uniformed tax rate of eleven dollars and seventy-nine cents, the average single-family residential assessment of six hundred and thirty-eight thousand four hundred dollars would yield an average single-family residential tax bill of seven thousand five hundred and twenty-seven dollars. The average commercial and industrial property assessment is about one million three hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars. This yields an average commercial and industrial tax bill of approximately sixteen thousand three hundred and sixty-three dollars, again, using the single tax rate of eleven dollars and seventy-nine cents per thousand. So this is the community comparison for fiscal year twenty five. These are last year's numbers. This is for all the counties, all the towns and cities in Plymouth County that have a uniformed tax rate. As you can see, Pembroke is right about in the middle. Now, I want to remind everybody that higher or lower tax rates are not an indicator of higher or lower tax bills. For example, there are two towns in Massachusetts, Chilmark and Paxton, that in fiscal year twenty five both had an average residential tax bill of about seventy-five hundred dollars. But Chilmark had a tax rate of two dollars and twenty-five cents per thousand, and Paxton had a tax rate of fourteen dollars and seventy-four cents per thousand. So it's a huge difference, but it amounts to the same amount of tax bills. Now, Plimpton's tax rate at fifteen dollars and eighty-seven cents was the highest tax rate in Plymouth County last year, but they did not have the highest average tax bill. That honor went to Hingham with a tax rate of ten dollars and sixty-nine cents per thousand. So the split tax rate, what exactly is this? What the Select Board is voting on does not affect the total tax levy amount to be paid. It's going to remain at fifty-three point five million dollars. But what you're going to determine is what portion of the total tax amount a particular property class pays. Currently, residential properties make up about eighty-eight percent of the town's total valuation, and the commercial, industrial, and personal property, or CIP, make up about twelve percent of the total valuation. That's all the percentage of the levy that is paid by each class. Now, per Mass General laws, residential has to pay at least sixty-five percent of their full and fair share of the levy, and the CIP can't pay more than a hundred and fifty percent of their full and fair share of the levy. So if the maximum shift of fifty percent is voted on, then the Pembroke CIP would pay eighteen percent of the levy instead of twelve percent. So if the Board decided to have a ten percent shift, and what that means is you're going to take ten percent of the residential levy and shift it over to the commercial, industrial, and personal property, they'd have to pay it. So if a ten percent shift was voted, the average single-family property owner would save about ninety-six dollars a year, and the average CIP taxpayer would pay an additional one thousand six hundred and thirty-eight dollars a year. Now, if the maximum fifty percent was voted, again, that takes fifty percent of the residential, shifts it over to the commercial, industrial, personal property, the average single-family property owner would save about four hundred and ninety-two dollars, and the average CIP taxpayer would pay an additional eight thousand one hundred and eighty-nine dollars. Now, usually municipalities that vote to have a split tax rate have a more commercial and industrial properties than Pembroke does. Communities in Plymouth County that did have a split tax rate in fiscal year twenty five had between fifteen percent and thirty percent CIP. The Board of Assessors recommends to vote for a single tax rate. Now, you're also going to be considering a small commercial exemption. With a small commercial exemption, up to ten percent of the commercial levy gets shifted to other commercial and industrial taxpayers. But that also includes chapter landowners, because chapter sixty-one A, chapter sixty-one B, and forestry, which is sixty-one, are considered commercial for this. So all the farmers and all that kind of, those people are going to be added to this. Who is eligible for a small commercial exemption? The sole proprietors and partnerships of commercial properties, but it's not industrial, it's just commercial. You can't have more than ten employees, but it's all locations company-wide. So think about Dunkin' Donuts. If they have nine employees working at the center, they're not going to count, because we all know that there's more Dunkin' Donuts out there, and all the locations certainly add up to more than ten employees. The total assessment of the property can't be more than a million dollars. The business has to be certified by the Department of Labor and Workforce Development, and if a parcel has multiple tenants, all of them have to be eligible businesses. So if you have a strip mall, you've got three tenants. Tenant number one is an insurance company with five employees, great, that counts. Tenant number two is a hairdresser, they have nine employees, great, they count. Tenant number three is Dunkin' Donuts, well, we all know, it's out, so that entire strip mall is going to be out. Now, the benefit is it shifts up to ten percent of the commercial levy from eligible parcels to non-eligible parcels. But there are some things to consider. If the property is not owner-occupied, the tax benefit goes to the property owner and not the small business owner, that's the tenant. It's very difficult to track. The last list received from the Office of Labor and Workforce Development had about four hundred businesses on it that have less than ten employees. Less than five percent of those businesses on the list would have actually qualified for the small commercial exemption. Depending on the ownership, the burden is sometimes shifted to other small business owners. Like the little insurance guy in the strip mall, he's going to end up paying more, because his entire strip mall, it would not qualify. There are only fourteen communities statewide that have adopted the small commercial exemption. And you'll also be considering the residential exemption. So what is this? This lowers the assessment of qualifying properties by up to thirty-five percent. It shifts a portion of the tax burden from eligible residences to other residential properties. The properties have to be owner-occupied as the main domicile, and it doesn't pertain to apartments, multifamily homes, second homes, or rentals. So which communities have accepted it? Large cities or towns with a lot of rental properties, like apartment buildings or homes that are rented. Think about Boston, how many rental places they have. Resort communities with a lot of seasonal residents. Most residential properties in Pembroke are already owner-occupied, so the shift would be distributed to a very small percentage of homes. Only nineteen Massachusetts cities and towns have accepted the residential exemption. Now, the last that you will be voting on is the open space discount. So what is this? It shifts up to twenty-five percent of the levy burden of Class II open-space properties to other residential properties. This one's an easy one. It's not applicable to Pembroke, because we do not have any properties that are classified as Class II. Does anybody have any questions?
Does anyone have any questions? So your recommendations are?
So.
Yes, no, no, no.
The Board of Assessors recommends to vote no on the small commercial exemption, no on the residential exemption, no on the open space discount, and no on the, to vote for a uniform tax rate. So now I ask for the vote on that, for you guys.
And so is this for individual votes that we need to take?
Yes.
Thank you, Jeanne. Sounds very helpful. I would entertain a motion if nobody has any questions.
You actually can vote all four in one motion.
Yeah.
You don't need.
That's fine. Would somebody like to make a motion, please?
We'd like it as a slate.
It's fine with me.
I move to maintain the single tax rate. Move no on the small commercial exemption, move no on the residential exemption, move no on the open space discount.
Second.
The motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
I just have one more thing before I go.
Sure.
I just want to remind everybody that real estate exemptions for seniors, surviving spouses, disabled veterans, and blind are currently available. They are due, the application are due in our office, the assessors' office, by April first, except for the Veterans Clause twenty-two H, which is due February second. If anybody has any questions about any kind of real estate exemptions, please call the assessors' office at two nine three seven eight one two nine three two three nine three. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have a list of all those exemptions listed on the website someplace? We do, right?
Yeah, they're on the front page, and they're on the assessors', and Board of Assessors', and.
So April first, February second.
Three different pages, so.
Excellent. Thank you. We have a scheduled appointment, thank you for coming, for seven twenty, our Veterans Agent and Town Memorial Committee are going to update us on their Veterans Day activities. Christine, are we all set? We're not waiting for anybody else, right? Christine, we're not waiting for anybody else, right? Because I know we're a few minutes early.
Uh, no.
I just want to make sure. Okay. Perfect. Hi. Welcome.
Hi. So this is Commander Paul DeVal.
Welcome.
Did you all want?
We do.
We all know Deputy Chief Wendy LaPierre. And they're on the Memorial Committee.
We all know you.
And I'm the new Veterans Agent. So I have, tonight, we have the proclamation. If you'd like me to read it, I will. And we're just going to discuss, and if anybody has any questions about the Veterans Day Parade, next Tuesday, November eleventh, we have, we just want to make sure people are aware that it's a new thing for us this year, or for the Memorial Committee this year. We opted to not do a memorial parade. We're going to do a Veterans Day Parade instead.
And this is our first year.
It's our first year, yeah. Yeah, we're going to fire police, veterans, the high school band, youth groups, antique cars, the military support group, all kinds of antique cars. People are actually calling me all day today. Can I still get in? Can I still get in? As far as the ceremony goes, we're going to leave actually Arrow and the vicinity of Arrow at, nah, ten, we're mustering at nine-thirty, we're going to leave at ten o'clock, march up through Center, into the community center parking lot, into the community center, where we'll have the ceremony at eleven o'clock. There'll be a prayer by the pastor at the first church. The high school chamber singers will be up in the walking track, which is going to be amazing. We have a gentleman on the committee that will read the proclamation. Pledge of Allegiance, there'll be speakers, Tracy Marino and Sean Keegan will be speaking. We'll have our essays from the three students from each school. And they'll have food trucks afterwards, and it's going to be great. And that's what we hope it will be, a little bit more celebratory than a parade for Memorial Day. We will still have our Memorial Day ceremony as we always do, just minus the parade part.
There was always a lot of discussion on how difficult it is to keep the ceremony, a parade somber, it's a somber event.
Right, exactly.
Instead of celebratory, so.
That was always a.
I think it's a great plan to move this to having it on Veterans Day.
Would you like me to read this?
Does anybody have any questions about Veterans Day ceremonies or anything before?
Just for the folks that want to march, some veterans, will there be transportation from the community center to?
Yes, for the ones that can't walk, yes.
Yep, so first we'll have, first of all, there will be a shuttle if anybody wants to participate in the parade. Park at the community center, starting at nine o'clock, we can shuttle down to Arrow till about ten minutes of ten, until we get ready to walk off. And we'll, you know, just that way they can park here, we'll get them shuttled down, and they don't have to, then they'll march down. There will be a shuttle bus for anybody that wants to march that can't actually march, any of the older veterans, or anybody that wants to be in the parade. There'll be a shuttle bus and antique cars that will be more than happy to put them in their vehicles, so that they don't have to march the, it's a little less than a mile, but that could be strenuous for some, so. But that'll definitely be happening.
When we do make it here to the civic center, all the veterans are going to muster outside, as long as the weather's nice, not raining. You know, the brand-new windows that are outside and the front, we're going to muster out there, where everybody else is already seated, and then right after all of the clock, we'll all march in.
Oh, nice.
If the weather's good.
It's going to be perfect.
I hope so.
And like last year, we'll be led in by PAC one oh five, which was a huge hit last year. We love having the kids do that for us, so. Yeah.
Awesome.
Any other questions?
Sounds wonderful. Would you like us there at nine-thirty?
Actually, for Wendy. When, yeah, exactly. When is the public going to be notified of these?
We have already started putting it on social media. We've notified W A T D. We'll do a reverse nine-one-one call on Monday evening, and we've let all the businesses know as well. Started making calls today, because it will be closed from three hundred Cent Street to one twenty-eight Cent Street for approximately forty-five minutes. If it ends sooner, we'll certainly open up the roads.
Cool.
And hopefully the roads will be open, sign-up should be done, I hope.
It's a rolling closure, right? So if we can buy and open up, or is that not correct?
You know, we'd like to think that, but at this point, it does not always work out. But we'll have plenty of officers out there, barrels, and so on and so forth, so.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Christine, would you like to read the proclamation?
Sure. Commonwealth of Massachusetts, a proclamation. Whereas, since the Commonwealth's earliest days, thousands of men and women have served our country in defense of freedom and liberty. And whereas, on November eleventh, nineteen eighteen, after four years of conflict, the Armistice was signed in the forest of Campion by the Allied Nations and Germany, ending World War One. The war to end all wars. And whereas, since that day, every November, people from around the nation have gathered to honor our veterans. And whereas, in November twenty twenty-five, the world will commemorate the one-hundred-and-seventh anniversary of the armistice that ended the fighting in World War One at eleven AM, November eleventh, nineteen eighteen, the eleventh hour of the eleventh day of the eleventh month. And whereas, there are approximately three hundred thousand veterans living in Massachusetts. And whereas, in recognition of the sacrifices made by those who have served our great nation, Massachusetts remains committed to supporting its veteran community through the HERO Act, honoring, empowering, and recognizing our service members and veterans. And whereas, today, we are reminded of the great sacrifices and contributions of our veterans have made to our country. And whereas, we honor and salute those who serve our country throughout the generations with honor, patriotism, and courage. And whereas, it is appropriate that all Massachusetts residents remember the bravery of those who served their country, so that their dedication and sacrifices serve as a reminder of the cost of our freedom. Now, therefore, I, Moira T. Healy, Governor of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, do hereby proclaim, November eleventh, twenty twenty-five, to be Veterans Day. And urge all residents of the Commonwealth to take cognizance of this event and participate fittingly in its observance, given at the Executive Chamber in Boston this eleventh day of November in the year of two thousand and twenty-five and of the Independence of the United States of America, two hundred and forty-ninth. Signed, Moira T. Healy, Kimberly Driscoll, and William Francis Galvin. Kimberly Driscoll, and William Francis Galvin. God save the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
It's beautiful.
Thanks. Thank you.
All right. Is it 7:30? 7:00. We still have a few minutes. So why don't we move forward? So we did have a scheduled, oh, no, skip that, too. Why don't we move on to some board action items? We have a few minutes. First up is a vote to appoint Janice, I'm going to butcher this name, Scopatolo? I don't know his last name. Scopatolo. I'm going to say that. Vote to appoint Janice Scopatolo of 269 Washington Street to Cultural Council to expire June 30th, 2028. I'm so sorry, Janice.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. All right. Next up, we have a vote to request to amend indoor live entertainment for Angel Pizza at 254 Church Street from 10:30 p.m. to 12:30 a.m. We don't have anybody here to speak on this today, right? So this is just a time change from 10:30 to 12:30?
What was it before?
10, I'm sorry, 10:00 p.m.
So 10. That's the only?
That's what they asked for.
Right. They, so they have 4 to 10:00 p.m. Monday through Saturday. Everything has gone well. There's been no complaints. Paperwork is fine. And they were asking to extend the hours from 10:00 p.m., from the end of 10:00 p.m. to 12:30 a.m.
They didn't know if it would take off, and it did.
More of a residential area, too. I don't think there's any houses nearby.
And this is indoor, it's for indoor karaoke?
No, and your other live entertainment licenses that are indoor, they're there as well.
Yeah.
So this is.
Okay. And everything in place?
Yes.
Yes.
Someone make a motion?
Yeah, move to amend indoor live entertainment, Angel Pizza, 254 Church Street, from 10:30 p.m. to 12:30 a.m.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Next up, we have a vote on an application for one-day liquor service at the community center for November 29th. Master of Laws, Chapter 138, subsection 14. Were we expecting anybody to speak on this one that you know of? Okay.
No, ma'am. This is the first coming through to you from the community center's event rental application process.
Any comment from Lance on this?
Yes, it's coming from Lance.
He's coming from Lance?
No, no, I apologize, but.
Any comments from Lance?
Correct. In other words, Lance has acknowledged and supported it, given them the paperwork to give to you. So we have to figure out what that process looks like. But as it is, they're already going through two other boards just to get here in this particular moment. So Lance, having some tummy over it, said that, and if you guys want to see every one of these applicants, we will tell them to come.
I don't know if that's necessary.
With that much supervision, and in this case, a caterer.
Right, a caterer for a craft event.
Yeah, it's a craft show.
Yep.
So we authorize this. Lance is in charge of, he can shut it down?
Yes, he can.
If he feels it, so, okay.
Absolutely. Now, all of those terms and conditions exist in the rest of the package. In fact, we might want to invite him in to explain how he achieved or came to that.
I trust his judgment. I just, you know, didn't know who had the authority there.
Any other questions?
No, just more of a comment. These folks have done well, basically with the Wolves Den or Courtside, where they usually have these events, and I haven't heard any complaints.
Are you talking about social vendor events?
Yep, correct, yeah. Done really well.
We're happy to take their money.
What is the fee?
Oh, that's a good question. I don't know which room they're renting, so I can't answer that. But I will get to the full, let's see, have it.
Excuse me. Do we have a motion?
Yeah, move to approve the application for one-day liquor service at the community center, November 25th, 29th, excuse me, Master of Law, Chapter 138, subsection 14.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Next up, vote to approve the minutes of September 24th, 2025, and October 8th, 2025.
Take it as a slate. I move to approve the minutes of September 24th and October 8th, 2025.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Christine.
Anyone to die there?
Come on, man.
Well, he won't.
He was on one, but not the other.
Which one?
He won't, not the eighth.
Oh, I had the 24th in my hand.
That's okay.
Take back last name.
And if you read them well wrong, you can still vote on them, so whatever you want to do.
Either way, I don't oppose.
There you go.
All right, that takes me about, and we have, all right, three minutes. Why don't we jump to any older new business? Does anybody have anything tonight? Okay. No?
Do you want to mention the door-to-door solicitation?
We're going to go back to the, yeah, well, it's because it's at 7:50. I was going to wait.
It's only a scheduled appointment.
Oh, so we guess we could have, okay. Well, we did have a scheduled appointment for 7:50 for a door-to-door solicitation application for Sophia. What's her last name?
Mullily.
Mullily, for Weathervein Home Services, but she, what happened here?
She withdrew.
She just canceled the drink.
She withdrew. Well, it's now dusk at 4:30, so.
So that's not going to.
The yield isn't, the juice isn't worth the strain.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. And then, no older new business, we said, do we have any liaison updates tonight? Okay, okay. Do you have anything for us in Town Manager's Report that we could go over for a couple minutes, or?
Sure.
You want to get started, and then we'll come back?
Sure. Cut me off when you're ready.
Okay.
First of all, I want to congratulate the two high school sports teams, both making the MIAA playoffs, both doing well so far in the playoffs. In fact, just before the start of this meeting this evening, our girls volleyball team beat Garten Dunstable to move on to the final eight. Super excited. I want to note that so far in the games that they've played, they have not lost a game in the playoffs. So I'm really excited about that. I don't want to jinx them. Keep up the good work, ladies. But you can lose a game. You can lose two games, as long as you win three. You know what I mean? Three sets to two. They are going to be playing the winner of, who is it, Medfield and Arlington Catholic. They play tomorrow, so we'll find out who that is. Boy soccer doing well again this year for multiple years in a row. They are in the round of 16. They won last night 4 to nothing against Greater Lowell. Way to go, guys. They are waiting for the winner of Nipmuck and Tantascqua High Schools. Those two schools are playing each other right now as we speak, and ours.
Did you look them up?
I did not. And I actually had to look them up, because I'm embarrassed to say, I did not know where these two schools were. Nipmuck is a regional school district made up of Mendon and Upton, and Tantascqua is also a regional school district in a town that I didn't even recognize, but it's adjacent to Sturbridge.
Never heard of them.
So, you know, learn something every day. Next up, so congratulations, guys. Keep up the good work. I'd love to see you playing the state championship again this year.
Let's stop here since it's 7:30, if you don't mind.
Okay, perfect.
Sorry. At 7:30, we have a public hearing that we're going to open for a Class II license transfer, C1-1-77 application from Miller Classic Autos to John Wingle Doing Business as Orphan Car Garage at 246R Washington Street, Unit Number 3, no outside storage or display. Hi.
Hello, good evening.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Could you identify yourself?
My name is John Wingle.
Hi.
I own Orphan Car Garage.
Thanks for coming.
Thanks for having me.
And what are you asking from us tonight?
So I'm renting this space at Unit 3 at 246 Rear Washington Street from Glenn Miller, who currently has, I believe, a seven-car, six-car used car license there, indoor storage only. Was lucky enough to meet up with Glenn. He's sort of slowing down. I'm going to take over the business. He's going to work with me, but we thought it would be advantageous for me to have the business license in my name. I do currently have, although did currently have a used car license in the town of Abington that I received in 2022. Just moving to Pembroke from Abington, would like to get the license in my name here as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All paperwork is complete?
Yes, ma'am.
All is all set. Is there any discussion or any questions? Thank you.
God, just that these businesses are common, and this address, that whole complex, is almost exclusively these type of businesses.
I'm finding that out.
Quickly, I'm sure.
I remember they proposed that when I was on the planning board, and I was like, all right, build it, and they were common, so I'm a gun.
It's a great spot. It's a great spot, yeah. It's perfect for me, because what I specialize in is vintage and special interest cars. So I'm not your typically used car dealer that has cars out front with flags, and that's not what I want. The stuff that I sell, I need to have inside. So having a space like that is super, super important for me.
Makes sense.
See, you're more specialty.
Yeah, yeah. And most of what I sell isn't local. 98% of my business is online. I never even meet the customer. I sell cars all over the world. I sent a car to Greece last month, a car to Sweden the month before that.
How do you warranty that? Or do you not have to warranty it?
Actually, believe it or not, the state of Massachusetts doesn't differentiate year. It's all by mileage, whatever the odometer says. So if the car has 60,000 miles on it, technically, I have to give it a lemon law warranty of 60 days, you know? Most buyers understand, you know, you're buying a 50, 60, 70-year-old car. But I'm the type of guy that if someone gets a car from me and there's a problem with it, I'm going to stand behind it anyway, whether I have to or not, because my reputation means that much to me. But yeah, technically, their covenant's a lemon law. No matter how old it is, it's all about the mileage. Now, I could sell everything TMU, and let's face it, a 50-year-old car, how do you prove that odometer is actual? You know the stuff that used to happen back in the day, right? You know, but I usually, I usually sell the car, put the mileage that's on the odometer, and, you know, if there's a problem, I'll handle it. But most people completely understand what they're buying. I do video.
Reputation is everything.
Reputation's everything.
Especially with the internet.
Exactly, exactly. And if you look at my Google reviews, I just got a 35th, five-star positive. I shouldn't say anything. I don't want to jinx it. 35 in a row of all five-stars. And that's pretty good, selling old cars.
And you have a sweet niche, though.
I do.
Your like area.
I do, yeah.
What's your niche?
A special interest, a lot of it is affordability. I got into it because I felt like the hobby was so unaffordable to so many people. So I would find cars that could be sold affordably. People may be entering the hobby, maybe not a Mustang, but a Falcon, you know, something that could be more affordable. Maybe not a convertible, but a really cool four-door sedan, that someone could get into the hobby for under $10,000 maybe, and have a lot of fun, put the kids, go get ice cream. That was kind of my niche. Still is. I still focus on affordability. That's kind of my advertising slogan, is purveyors of affordable classic cars. Sometimes I venture outside the affordability, because it's all a matter of, you know, interpretation.
Those are the risks.
Right? But I try to stick to cars that are like under $20,000.
Good for you.
Nice.
And it works, yeah. Something I've been into forever. I opened, I opened an LLC in 2018. Started in Abington in 2022. It's just, it's been going really well.
So this fell into your lap nicely.
It did, yeah.
Good.
They say I'm a natural. I don't know.
Well, it's an orphan car garage.
Right, right. Cars that need new homes, yeah.
Love it.
Thank you.
Any other questions or anything? If not, I would entertain a motion.
I move to approve the application of John Wingle for the transfer of Class II Auto Dealers' License C2-77 from Glenn S. Miller, Miller Classic Motor Cars LLC, as exercised at 246R Washington Street, Unit Number 3, 1,400 square feet of office and warehouse, garage space to store up to eight cars inside, no outside storage or display.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you so much.
Good luck.
Can I just ask one question of Sabrina? You need the bond from me, right? And you need the bond to be spelled out exactly as the license. How will I know how the license will be spelled out in my name?
Well, I was going to say, you can talk to me tomorrow, but it's going to be your name, D D F, because you set yourself up.
Gotcha. Okay, I want it to match. Thank you.
You got it.
Good luck.
Our next is at 7:40, so we still have a few minutes. Do we know if we were expecting as Jim Gaines coming? He's always right in front of me, never mind. Well, maybe we'll just take it. No, no, you're fine. I haven't even read it off yet. So at 7:40, we have public hearing for new Class II license application, James Gaines, CCB Motors LLC, 246R Washington Street, Unit Number 6, no outside storage and display. Hi.
Hello.
Welcome.
Thanks for seeing me here tonight.
Happy to. Could you identify yourself?
I'm James Gaines. I live at 54 Rochester Road and Carver, and am a former Pembroke resident. Lived here for, I don't know, 25 years, something like that, on Full Winds Drive.
Oh.
And raised my kids here, and I love the town.
You were neighbors, huh?
Best neighborhood ever.
It's the best.
Yep, I know.
Beautiful. And I'm trying to apply to sell some used cars illegally. I've been in a different business for over 40 years, and getting tired of it.
Yeah.
My body's tired of it, and I'm one of those guys that has to keep moving, so that's why I'm applying for that license, because you can only sell three cars legally in Massachusetts, I believe, a year under state law.
Yeah, where they have a license.
Correct. So I have to, I want to be lawful, and I do have the property, and I think I did everything I was supposed to do. It's just, it's a new thing for me, but I'm going to retire from what I'm doing in the construction business and just kind of sell some used cars, affordable used cars. That's it.
We like affordable, and we like legal.
Yeah, well, I had, it's, I'm not going to do anything crazy, you know.
How long did you leave Pembroke?
It's been about seven years. We were neighbors all, Joe, and probably about seven years ago.
I was just curious.
Yeah. I mean, I didn't want to leave, but I had to leave.
Well, you're kind of coming back a little.
A little bit, yeah. I have a lot of, I mean, I love the town. I coached hockey here. I was on a couple of different boards that don't pay, and involved in a few things here.
As it goes.
I love the town. But I just want to, where the property is over here, and I have access to it, I'm going to, I just want to be legit. If I'm selling cars online, and there's no advertising of them, they won't be displayed, and there won't be that many. I just want to do it legally. And that's why I'm applying.
Paperwork is all in place?
Yes, ma'am.
Does anyone have any questions, or is there any discussion? Any further discussion? If not, I would entertain a motion.
Move to approve the application of James Gaines, CBB Motors LLC, for a new Class II Auto Dealers' License to be exercised at 246R Washington Street, Unit 6, with 1,400 square feet of office space and warehouse, garage space to store up to four cars inside with no outside storage or display.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Good luck.
Thank you.
So the CBB, they have my grandkids, Cora, Bobby, and Brendan.
Oh, I love that.
Hope that brings you luck.
Good luck in your retirement, Jim. I'm next.
I'm not retiring.
We never retire. Thank you.
I'll get you up in your PCV again?
Tomorrow?
Sure. Of course, of course it is. That was the plan. Plans can't go astray.
Let's return to the Town Manager's Report.
Okay. I just wanted to announce that our final Fall Hazardous Waste Day is scheduled for Saturday, November 15th. That's actually going to be in Hull. It's still, it's quite a drive, but you can, as Pembroke resident with trash, it's free to you. You just have to sign up. You can visit our website for information on how to sign up. Again, that's November 15th, in Hull, and that's the final of the fall. There will be no more hazardous waste days until the spring. So if you have hazardous waste you want to dispose of, go ahead and sign up and bring it to Hull. So.
Okay.
Next announcement is that the town hall will be closed on Tuesday, November 11th, for the Veterans Day celebration. We've already covered the parade, 10 o'clock, 11 o'clock at the community center. Just wanted to also announce that I had been promised that the construction in the center will be buttoned up and pretty, so there'll be no issues with the parade. So, and then a couple of updates on our projects. The Public Aid to Headquarters project is ongoing. The foundation work is still being completed. They're moving forward. There are no glitches. The testing has all come back good on all of that. The fire substation at Monroe and School Streets is also moving around well. If you've driven by there recently, you'll actually see some walls up. So that's super exciting. We did an update of the cash flow analysis, and the project is projected to be coming in under budget and on time. So I will continue to update the board on that, but super excited about that at this point.
Question. So we don't have a town, a clerk of the works. It's essentially you, right?
Well, for the Well, for the town side, it's me. We do have a owner's project manager, so that we have staff on site.
So, you're, yeah, not exactly a clerk?
Correct.
Okay. So, the performing duties?
Yeah, of the clerk.
In conjunction with you?
We share that, yep.
Okay. Just looking out for the best interest.
Absolutely.
If that's everything?
That is, that is everything I have.